Everyone for coming out. We have one item on the agenda tonight. Our first order of business is to review the minutes of our meeting on March 12th, which Christina has sent along to everyone. Has anyone had a chance to review? And if there are no changes, could someone please move the minutes?
They'll move.
One favor? Okay, terrific. One order of business we have tonight is Coffee Unique at 69 Pondfield has a proposed change for us. If you could please come up to the microphone and identify yourselves. Thank you.
It's on right here. It's on? Yeah, is it on? I don't know. I can't tell.
Yeah, it's working.
Okay. My name is Jose Ramirez, the architect, or one of the architects with Piro Studio. We're here to represent Coffee Unique. We have to seek approval for...
I think you may try to adjust the mic. So just one second. Is it too low? Is that maybe physically too low? Let's...
Hold it. It's all right. I got it. It's all right. Yeah. Guys, I'm here with Piro Studio. We're here seeking approval for proposed outdoor seating. So basically, we have four tables at two-foot radius. And then we have 16 chairs. That's straight as simple as that. So we have some planters that now are going to be removed. So there's no other proposed...
And for yourself too? Yeah.
My name is Adrian Cambray. I'm the owner of Coffee Unique.
Okay, terrific. Before we go, we approved the application. I think one thing I wanted to clear out of the way before we sort of get into the matter at hand is I think, can I correct me? There was an issue with some signage initially when they were taken care of. Okay, good. That everyone's doing what Kevin asks them to do.
There was a sign, flagged something. Yeah, banders.
Okay, good. So with this particular proposal, Kevin's already expressed some thoughts on it, but I think the concerns that we're going to have are going to be around the number of chairs at the table. I think, as you know, Pondfield is a pretty big and you have fairly narrow storefronts. We're concerned about potential encroachment on the neighbors. So if you could talk a little bit about the choice of four seats and how you think that would work? I think that'd be helpful.
Part of that has to do with the fact that the interior is small. So we're trying to eliminate some of that congestion inside. That's, you know, having the outdoor will definitely help a lot. And as you know, it's not going to be... It's a seasonal thing where people sit out there. So it's not all the time, you know? That's part of our...
How wide are... I mean, how deep are the chairs?
Those are typical 18-inch chairs.
So if I add 18... What's 18 times 4?
It's five feet because it's...
Yeah, it's five feet.
18... Yeah. Right, 36 plus 24. Yeah. So it's five feet altogether at a minimum.
Five feet for extended from the wall.
Like 10 feet for each.
Okay, so if I start at the door and I go 18, 24, 18, 24, 18, 18, 24, 18, I'm over eight feet 11.
Which way are you going? Direction from the sides of the door. That's correct. So it's 20 feet plus the width of the door.
I'm fully across, right?
Yeah.
You have four chairs of 18 and two tables of 24. That doesn't fit within eight...
Yeah, that's math.
It can't fit.
Right, the way that it's drawn, it's as if there's a 14 and a quarter chair at each side. So that, I mean, that's just how the math works out. So if you're using a typical cafe chair at 18 inches deep, then it's going to be the five feet for each.
And if there's somebody sitting in it with their legs, you need to know.
Typically, that chair goes in into the table. It's not always out, right?
But if it's out and somebody pulls the chair out to sit down, you've got... There's a cascading effect where, you know, you've got a... I don't see how that works.
Yeah. It feels like the eight feet 11 inches that we have there in reality. I mean, it's 811.
I mean, we could always... I mean, if there's a chair issue, we could always go with a smaller chair. I mean, they have stools that could be smaller. That's not an issue. But as far as the tables, I mean, you know...
I just think that's immensely crowded.
But even a folding U-stroke chair is 17 and 1/2 inches. It's not going to be down to the 14 inches.
And if somebody backs, you know, they're going to knock over the...
Yeah. I think you're starting to get a sense that, you know... I think we all like the idea of, you know, having an outdoor presence. It livens up the town. It's good for the business. I think what we've been trying to do with a bunch of storefronts though is try to keep everyone within the parameters of the space that they have. And, you know, the number of chairs and the number of tables seems like it is going to encroach on the neighbors.
Do you think you need 16 spaces for the... What kind of traffic are you getting?
I have probably need four or 100 of them. I have a lot of people coming every day. But, you know, my store is small.
And what...
I go in and grab the coffee because I have only 19 seats inside. The small store usually stay like in front or like waiting someone just to move or grab the coffee and go. So that would help all of my business, but that would help even general look nicer having more seating. And I'm not sure if we can have seat where it's a matter here, you know? Down here?
Also, the other thing we're thinking is, I don't know if you guys would allow to have at least another chair and table with chairs where the next to it with the meters? Not so close to it, but, you know, in that area.
Are you saying further up?
Yeah, closer to the curb.
Again, I think that's probably going to impede flow of people.
You sort of sit next to the parking meter there.
Not necessarily. I mean, it could be... You see how they have the sections of concrete there? It would be kind of in front of where that red car is. So it doesn't impede into the meter.
John, do you think you can have a car?
I believe 19.
19.
The health department was 19. Yes. Okay. Okay. Okay, because when he was last time, he gave me the ones at 19. So, okay. I mean, I can remove the board chairs. Okay. Okay. Good to know.
What does the taco restaurant...
Yes, I have about four or five actually.
They are totally different. They have their... In the process of the client's appointment, a lot of people that you can have that are not by the herd who have been COVIDed before by the local commissioner or a lot of people who have other diseases, that everybody who has that has never been ordered.
So...
Yeah, because they're going to get other people. People who have previously tried it out of the community or a lot of people who put that out every year. They've been doing an application to the community market. That is, that's what we're going to set up. But they have to comply with plain word approval. Someone who lives in 1988 still hasn't complied with that. If you want people to move, you can come from that to plain word. So when you have a product that is not approved at any point.
So what drove a precedent for us? Because I think it's always pretty crowded there when you're trying to... And that's right as you're crossing the street as well. So...
The, um... I'm blanking on the name. The Slade to the Grind. Do they have approval?
No.
Okay.
They have four tables outside. I think all their sons have four tables outside.
And then two of them are on the street and two of them are against the building. That's a tight fit.
Yeah.
Okay, so those aren't precedents for any application.
So now they come here. So what we're seeing is temporary stuff from COVID.
And Urbachio has four tables. Somebody ought to stop by because they have four. Yeah.
Everybody's... They're almost doing well.
Right. And the other one I saw was Urban Hamlet, but they have their own space. Yeah. Okay, so they don't have a permit.
They want to have a little more seating on that they have a little bit of volume.
These cafe tables are Pete's, but Pete's has a very wide storefront, so...
They have a group for... They are for five tables of 15 feet and they are applying to come back to you for three more people or something.
But they're probably all within their storefront. If it had to... Yeah.
And sorry, did you repeat how many tables they have and chairs?
They have five people.
So three chairs per table.
Three chairs, yeah. They did have a group for Archie and the guy from Archie. There's two more people outside. There's a herd.
Yeah. Two and two courts.
Okay. And then there's, across from the train station, there's a little bar on the corner that seems to have chairs and tables.
On which side of the tracks? Works to Mrs. Morgan's.
Yeah, on Mrs. Morgan's side.
Mrs. Morgan's side.
Well, that's funny. It's, uh... What's that bakery?
Yeah, Chantilly.
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 It's near Chantilly.
Oh, Tabary?
No, Chantilly. No, the Tabary is on the corner. Is that... Yeah.
They have a group hall. They want to... They... I know that they have a group hall. I don't know what I'm thinking. But the whole has a group hall. Before, it was a previous block. They have a group hall. I have to go to the...
Okay. But again, that's a very different location. This particular location in Pondfield is unusually busy as we sort of think about the different areas. And I think there was a question about whether the planters are going to stay or go. Right, was that? Because you have the planters there. We're not in the portion yet, but I think you get a feel that, you know, we're concerned about the number of tables. If there are more questions for them, maybe we can open up a public meeting for a second and then go into our discussion. So not seeing... To do that, so let's open the public. Seeing no one, we will close the public meeting and go into some discussion here. Who would like to start off?
I'll just say that I think that just based on the math, you know, we should approve more like a one-table flanking the door situation with potentially two maximum three chairs, with the three chairs adding up to about 3'6, 18, 24, and that being the absolute maximum. So you're not going encroach onto that five foot, even if somebody's sort of stretching out. But I would defer to the town. If the precedence is for two seats at a table, then that would be, you know, preferable to going than more than three.
Well, it sounds like we have approved three chairs and a table for Pete's.
For Pete's, yeah.
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 And that, I guess, would give us, if we had... That would be 18 and 24. How come I can't do math? Is that 36? No.
It's five feet in any direction. Yeah.
But if you have three chairs and one...
Yeah.
Right, so that's 18 and 24.
Depending on your angle.
42, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think that's about as much as that area could stand is two tables with three chairs each. I know that doesn't give you the table space you want, but it is a public sidewalk and I don't want to... I don't think it would be wise for us to establish a precedent of taking up as much space as this divan indicates.
You like anything you want to have?
I have a feeling, as you're meant and on the property line, so the property line, is it includes some of the brick? So it's just, it's not only just the white outline, right?
Yeah, there's a little...
So the outside of the potters, basically? That's your property line?
Property line, where the, yeah, the brick meets the concrete.
On the adjacent property. I see it. Yeah. So it's that first block?
Okay. And then, do you know the distance from the facade to the tree pit here? I know you show a measurement of 4'4" from... I don't know what that represents actually, but I'd like to understand the distance from the...
So there's a dimension line happening for the weather here?
So that'd be 8'10".
Yeah, so you have four to that tree, you know, the curve for the tree line, the tree pit. You have 4'4" and then you have 4'6" from there to the side.
So 8'10".
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, so that's 8'10". And theoretically, you want five feet of walking space?
Right, but if you... Presumably, the angle would be different. Yeah.
So if we measure from the line, I understand, so if we measure from the... You're going to have three chairs coming over to the table or the wall. So three chairs and one upright chair. So we measure from the back of that chair. Why would you not?
Right, so if we're working with 8'10", and I need five feet of... That means you can use 3'10" of table and seating, right?
So I have a three of chairs or I have a four. So we go all three.
Right, because then you'd only be 42 inches. So 3'10" is 46 inches.
Exactly. So you'd be within. Yeah.
And some places seem to have that chair against the wall so that they can look out at the street.
They want to do that.
Yeah, I think that's the best. Because with the chair... Go back. If you remove the chairs, I will take off those chairs, you know, when people walk. I don't want, you know, someone is sitting and going back and hitting someone.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. But how is a tree pit complicated? Because you didn't... We've got enough away from the tree pit, but you've only got 4'4" and people can't walk through the tree pit. It's a different texture, but it's almost level. But if you had a stroller or a wheelchair or a cane, you'd have trouble.
Isn't there a border around the tree?
No, it's not one of those. It's semi-permeable.
Oh, okay. Yeah. If you go down, if you stroll... Yeah. And then you can really see it.
The corner on the right-hand side.
Over there, you can really see it. Yeah. Yeah. Sort of flattish ass.
Unless the planning board determines otherwise. Okay, sorry. You gave it to me. I read it. Mine doesn't take what into consideration? What it says is... You're getting rid of 18 inches. Take me a while. Apologies. For here. The minimum distance should be measured from the portion of the outdoor eating area frontage, which is nearer either the curb or the nearest obstruction, unless otherwise determined by the planning board. Parking meters, traffic signs, and trees which have gradings flush to grade without fences or guards shall not count as obstructions. And so we are... We will be allowed to overlook that tree area, but we are allowed to take it into consideration as well.
They are definitely up and down. I get it. Mike, did you have other questions before you go on?
No, that's it for me. Thank you.
Richard, do you have questions?
Yeah, I think I'm with Liz in terms of if there were fewer seats at each table, then that changes the math. It gives us five plus a six-inch buffer, even if the table comes out a little bit over the course of a business day. Talking with the four, it's too tight.
Tom Thawes?
I agree with everything that's been said. I do think it's also... Latterly, and I think latterly, it's also pretty difficult. I mean, you're going to be... People by default are going to be on the adjacent properties, I think. I don't know if you've spoken with those... Or you...
They got notified.
But they were... But I spoke with both of them and they were okay. So the gallery and the estate agent, they were okay with sitting outside.
On your plan, you said 8'9" and 8'11", so we use the math. We got 24, we need 95. We got 10 foot. They're the same when we equal 9. So it's a little tighter. The number of...
I would think too that you would want easier flow in and out of your building. And I think with this as it is now, those chairs up against the door.
Yes, so I think the feedback that you're getting here is that we want to be helpful. We see the opportunity for you to have some outside seating. I think both in the width and in the depth, I think a table on each side that had three seats would get you six more seats than you currently have. And, you know, we have a project here, but I think we have concerns in both dimensions about going for more. Any action here? Just wanted to give you a chance to say whatever you have to about that.
So I think I have...
If you can...
The portion on the 8'11", that's actually just defining the chairs and the tables, right? The dimension. But if you look at the line where the adjacent tenant is, we have about another, maybe 10 to a foot to play with right there. So, I mean, potentially, you could have two tables there.
Right, but you really don't have any... You've got two chairs up against each other in the middle. I mean, it's just awfully tight to sort of get in and then get out.
Inevitably, the space would expand. We've seen it at other locations and that can be to the detriment of your... We're thinking about you. We're also thinking about your neighbors, you know?
I said...
Do you have the measurements of the full width of your property?
I think the site plan may have it because that was actually a survey that we received from the land surveyor. If you look down, if you could zoom in into the blue hatch... Yeah, you might have to zoom in. Yeah, it's those 20 feet. I think it's 20 feet. 20 feet wide.
Yeah, so again, two 10s plus the 10. Right, you're...
Yeah, we could use the survey for that, so...
Where does it show 20 feet?
Uh, here. Looking at the back.
Oh, the back. Right, that's exactly right. Yeah. Right here, sorry. Okay, yeah.
So I think what we're trying to say is, you know, something's better than nothing. And, you know, I think that's probably, based on the discussion of the board, the best we can get you. And, you know, we take action, I guess.
And we have another table with at least two chairs down here where it's a meter down here.
Can we go to wherever he's talking about on the plan so we can see?
That's where the meter is.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's a...
In some... In some ways, in terms of impeding the pedestrian flood on the street.
Have to be a visual requirement for the back of the chair or the table to...
Even popping the curb, which happens in this town.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, so I mean, the... Say about public safety than we would, but I think it ties into the overall, yeah.
And if we... I mean, this is sort of precedent setting for us. And I think we need to be pretty careful. Not just... I mean, we definitely are sympathetic to what you're asking for, but I think we have to realize that we would end up doing that everywhere.
There are people that are going to be coming to us that I think what you've probably seen around town is an overabundance of this that was temporarily approved to keep everyone operating during COVID. And I think the village decided that was a good thing and I think we would all agree. But I think between the sidewalk dining and the outdoor dining, I think we're all trying to find that good post-COVID balance here.
What are your hours?
It's 8 to 10.
8 to 10.
And please, you're doing a good bit. We're just trying to balance.
He's doing good.
Yeah. We want you to continue to...
Have you cannibalized activity from Slade to the Grind and some of the others?
Yes, but there are a lot of people coming from, you know, from Taca Ho, from Yonkers and all places around. It's quite busy every day.
Yeah, that's great.
And Mayor was, she was really happy, so...
Yeah.
Sort of making products of the capital.
Coffee capital of Westchester.
And we've been... Three-month number-one coffee shop in Westchester according to the Google.
Nice. Good for you. That's what competition's all about. Is there someone who would like to make a motion?
I would move that we approve two tables with three chairs each on either side of the door.
And does your motion include the items that Kevin had identified in his memo to the... He had included a series of things in his.
Well, I think most of those are from the upper memo, right? Well, I think most of those are from the app memo, right? Right.
Okay.
And we could, I could add subject to the condition set forth in the application.
Is there second?
Second.
Any discussion, any further discussion?
Do we want to do anything about hours? I don't think we've, I mean, I don't have a problem with the 10 o'clock hour.
Given you're not really in a residential spot, so it wasn't striking me as problematic 10 o'clock. If they start going to do that, we might have something to say. Okay.
Yeah, I could try it.
I don't want to give my ideas, just.
And there's no alcohol served, right? There's no alcohol served at that?
Okay.
Maybe supplied by the patrons, but not.
But they do make a hell of a hot chunk.
So I know that, that would be the motion.
Okay, and I have a question on the motion. Do we need to define the side, the depth of the chairs, too, in that?
Uh, that might.
It would be according to the application.
Yeah. I'm not sure it says there, eight inches chairs.
So, so they're already defined?
I believe.
In the application? I don't think it's. No. Well, this is the application, but I don't see the, why don't we add the, the dimensions and say.
Right, 24 and 18, right?
24-inch tables and. Subject to that understanding about the size of the chairs and tables.
Well, that's good because people are going to fall off the 14-inch chairs that we're talking about.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. Hi. Reposed? Okay, look, we hope all goes well for you. We enjoy having you in the village. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
Second.
I'm in favor.
All right.
Thanks for coming out.